Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council. Today is Monday, October ninth, two thousand seventeen. And if I can kindly, I would be honored if I can have Mr. Jonah and Ronnie Miller come up to the lecturn. And can I have everyone stand for the pledge to the flag? And we will be led by the Miller family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. and Mrs. Miller. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen, Mr. Gingona.
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The first item is the proclaiming the week of October fifteenth through the twenty-first as freedom from workplace bullies. I do have a proclamation here, and I'm going to read it to the folks out there in the audience. And something that's very, very important. And we will send this proclamation out to a representative from the organization. Whereas the City of Daly City has an interest in promoting social and economic well-being of its citizens, employees, employers, and whereas the well-being depends upon the existence of healthy and productive employees working safe and abuse-free work environments. And whereas research has documented the stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments, and whereas abusive work environments are costly for employers with consequences including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, injuries, and whereas protection from abusive work environments should apply to every worker and not be limited to legally protected class status based on race, color, gender, national origin, age, or disability. Now therefore, the members of the City Council and I of the City of Daly City do hereby proclaim the week of October fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, as Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week in Daly City, and commend the California Healthy Workplace Advocates and Workplace Bullying Institute, which raises the awareness of the impacts of and solutions for workplace bullying in the United States. Sign and sealed this day in the City of Daly City, the ninth of October, two thousand And we will send this out to the California Healthy Workplace Advocates and Workplace Bullying Institute. It's a proclamation. Okay? Now I'll turn this over to Madam City Clerk, and we'll forward to our City Manager. Thank you so much. All right. The next item is the approval of the minutes for September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Number first.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving minutes say aye.
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 Next, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item, let me check, let me see. All right, I don't have, if there's anybody who would like to speak to an item on the consent agenda, please submit a card. And as of this time, I don't have any cards. So I'll move to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda for this evening.
So moved.
First.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the consent agenda is approved. Public hearings. Item number eight, public hearing, the proposal purchase of an additional automated license plate reader using federal asset forfeiture. And I'll turn it over to Captain Hensley and Lieutenant Fox. How are you, gentlemen, this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. The floor is yours, gentlemen.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Matthew Fox. I'm a lieutenant with the Daly City Police Department. This evening I will be addressing the proposed purchase of an additional automated license plate reader, here and after referred to as an ALPR, using federal asset forfeiture. A little background, on August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, council set today as a time and place for this public hearing. The police department currently has two automated license plate readers, systems affixed to patrol vehicles. The ALPR technology scans license plates at a high rate of speed and cross-checks those license plate numbers against law enforcement databases. These systems have provided valuable intelligence by providing police officers with immediate identification of stolen wanted vehicles and missing persons. The police department complies with the California Civil Code regarding all ALPR technologies. The police department is proposing the purchase of one additional ALPR system to be affixed to a city-owned vehicle driven by a police assistant. Currently, police assistants do not have the ability to efficiently query license plate through law enforcement databases in order to identify vehicles with unpaid parking citations. The ALPR technology provides the opportunity to efficiently identify stolen vehicles or having vehicles with five or more unpaid parking citations, as well as provide opportunities to hold the vehicle's owners accountable. The addition of one ALPR will enhance the intelligence gathering capabilities of the police department. The total cost for the purchase and installation of the three M automated license plate reader is approximately seventeen thousand dollars. All funds will be taken from the Federal Asset Forfeiture Fund, and there will be no cash match or other cost to the city. Staff recommends council approve the purchase of an additional automated license plate reader, and we are available if there's any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant Fox. Any questions from any of my colleagues?
I do.
Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you for your presentation. I just had a question, how many do we have in general? Like, in total?
The ALPR systems?
Yes.
We actually have two now, and we want to purchase one more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Fox. I do have one question. I was going through the specific section regarding ALPRs, and I did notice, maybe Ms. Martel can chime into this. It also said something about, we will abide in how, who accesses the information and how that information is protected, but at the same time, to put this information onto our website to let the public know that we are abiding by this criteria.
Yeah, correct. If you go to the Daly City website, we're one of the agencies that complies with the law with the transparency aspect of it.
Thank you, Lieutenant Fox.
No problem.
All right. Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, I might add, you may recall that we had a grand jury report provided to us a while back, and it is one of the strong recommendations that when a city takes action like this, that we make it as transparent as possible. So that just reinforces what Lieutenant Fox has told you, that we intend to advise the public of what we're doing. The purpose of all of this is to enhance the safety of the public. It is not meant to conduct any kind of covert operations, but really to protect the public, so.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. As I am familiar with this type of technology, it makes it much easier, because normally you have to drive up to a car, you look at the license plate, you gotta type it in, and you gotta check and see if it has X amount, but here you can just drive down the street, and it'll just scan these plates, and it's gonna make things much easier. So kudos. And actually, I think that technology has actually come down in price, just seventeen thousand dollars, and it's not gonna cost us anything. All right, that's my comment. All right. Any further comments or questions of Lieutenant Fox and Captain Hensley? All right. I have no cards on this matter, so I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
First.
Second.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gingona.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is communications, and this is item number nine, the request by the Governor to veto Senate Bill six forty-nine, written by Hueso, wireless telecommunications facilities. And Ms. Martel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, tonight. I'm requesting that the council consider reviewing the letter that has been provided, the draft letter that has been provided in your packet, which relates to a request to be made to Governor Brown to veto Senate Bill six forty-nine by Senator Hueso of Southern California from the San Diego area. And it is the Wireless Telecommunications Facilities Act. And it, this recommendation tonight is that you review the letter, and if you want to make any changes to it, provide me with that direction, and then direct me to finalize the letter and submit it to the Governor by October fifteenth, which is the deadline for the Governor to act on this bill. I just, before I came up, checked the enrolled bill status, and it has still not been signed by the Governor, which means he is still open to being persuaded one way or another about this legislation. But by way of background, SB six forty-nine is an effort to eliminate the public's input and eliminate reasonable local environmental and design review, and mandate the forced leasing of publicly-owned infrastructure, and eliminate the ability for local governments to negotiate fair leases for the installation of what is termed in the legislation as small cell wireless equipment on taxpayer-funded property. Currently, and historically, the way we've operated is that private corporations, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Nextel, any of the wireless companies that want to install cellular sites on public property, we enter into an agreement and we lease the space to them. So it provides a public benefit for them to be able to sell services using public property that is paid for by the taxpayer, so we request that they pay us an annual lease. This particular legislation essentially creates an environment where there are no more restrictions on cellular corporations, that they would be allowed to utilize for almost no cost annually, public property to install whatever cellular installations that they desire. The cellular industry claims that the equipment is necessary to implement 5G technology, which is the next generation of technology. But as I understand it, and as the Legislative Analyst Office at the Legislature indicated in their analysis of this bill, that particular technology is many years away from deployment. And in fact, while the industry has talked about this bill allowing for the implementation of 5G technology, nowhere in the legislation itself does it say that the impetus for this is to allow for the development and implementation of 5G technology. It really just says, we want to be able to use public property and not have to pay very much for the use of the property. The League of California Cities has been opposed to this legislation since it was introduced last spring. And throughout this entire legislative session, which just ended, they have been opposed to it because all of the amendments that were offered that would enhance local control and maintain public input were rejected by the author. And so the League remains opposed to this legislation, and has urged cities to send a communication to the Governor opposing it. By removing local discretion and mandating basically a ministerial process, we wouldn't have to have any kind of hearing on the installation of these cellular sites. The cellular corporations could just come in, get a permit, and install what they want, and pay a maximum of two hundred and fifty dollars a year for a permit to install as many cellular sites as they want on public infrastructure. The most troubling aspect of this legislation is that it would shift the authority away from the community and local elected officials to essentially for-profit corporations to determine the locations for wireless equipment installations that potentially could have health, safety, and aesthetic impacts on the community, but we would not have any real say in it. Under this legislation, the wireless industry would gain the ability to install very large and visible equipment on city streetlights, traffic signals, and stop signs, as well as on municipal facilities. Further, they would be granted the ability to place equipment about the size of a commercial refrigerator on the public right-of-way that would be required in conjunction with these installations, that they would actually put on streetlights and street poles and that kind of thing. And there would be no restrictions on the size or the quantity of these installations. As I mentioned, the egregious part about this is that it would provide the cellular industry with the ability to essentially use at discounted rate our public infrastructure of all types for a mere two hundred and fifty dollars a year per installation. Currently, to put it in perspective for you, the City has ten existing leases with telecommunications services providers on our city facilities that generate almost four hundred thousand dollars a year that goes into the general fund, that we use to support services and operations in Daly City. Once those leases sunset, under this legislation, if it were approved by the Governor, we would get a maximum of two hundred and fifty dollars per site, significantly less for use of the public infrastructure. In conclusion, the staff and the League of California Cities believe that Senate Bill six forty-nine does not serve the best interests of the local community. It capitalizes on the use of public property at a discounted rate to increase the profits of private telecommunications service providers. It completely ignores the potential significant health, safety, and aesthetic concerns that the public has a right to comment upon and object to in an open public forum intended to solicit public input. Of equal concern, it eliminates the ultimate authority of the council to make decisions about the installation of cellular facilities on public property, and how much could be charged through annual leases to those providers who seek to use the public right-of-way in our taxpayer-supported public facilities. Based on all of these reasons, I am urging the council to consider the draft letter that has been prepared, and provide me with direction to finalize the letter and send it on behalf of the council to the Governor. And I'll be glad to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Any questions for Ms. Martel?
Motion to approve the draft letter.
We have a motion to approve the draft letter.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? I would like to make one. Ms. Martel, I'd like to commend you. With all the bills on the Governor's desk, and a lot of good ones that he signed, this one is obviously taking power away from the various cities if this were to be approved. I commend you for your effort in keeping up with all of these bills. I have read this beforehand as well. And with that being said, again, thank you so much for keeping up on this and looking after Daly City. All right, so we have a first and second. Any further discussion? And this would require a...
Voice vote?
Okay. All right, so if we can have a voice vote, please. Motion by Buena Ventura, second by Vice Mayor Manalo. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gingona.
Aye.
Yeah, we're gonna do a voice vote, just to cover it.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
And Mr. Sylvester.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, we are to public appearances and communications. I have three cards this evening, and I would like to start off with Dre Montano and Ronnie Miller. And Dre, it's good to see you folks back again. I know the last meeting was so long, and you wanted to speak at the last one, but working up for it tonight. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Follow your hands.
Thank you. Standard date, April twenty-eighth. Is that extra, wasn't it, right? Yeah, it's an extra. Extra. Good evening. Aye.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm here with Ronnie Miller. My name is Dre Montano. I'm with American Cancer Society's Relay for Life, North Sammentail County, which includes San Bruno, South San Francisco, and Daly City. We are very excited to announce that Relay will be held this season at Jefferson High School in April, at the end of April. We're looking forward to partnering with the principal of Jefferson High School, who also is a cancer survivor. So we are very excited in bringing the communities together to raise money and bring awareness for a cure for cancer.
I just hope I've already emailed our mayor, and hopefully he will be speaking, and we would like each and every one of the council members to give us a few minutes that day and speak to our group, our people that will be there, and welcome everybody as part of our opening ceremony. So we look forward to working with all of you, and hopefully it's going to be a success as we've had prior.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, I would like to make a comment. Does anyone else on council like to make a comment? I'd like to say, I was at the last event, which was in San Bruno, and you said you covered Daly City, San Bruno, and I know the issues you've gone through to, because they wanted to take it away from Daly City, but you worked hard and got the principal of Jefferson High School to come on board, and I see here it's going to be held at Jefferson High School. This was, this really meant something for me when I saw all the purple shirts, including the Vice Mayor of San Bruno, Ken Abara, and he says if I show up next year, I have to wear tutu.
[laughing]
Because he wore one. So I commend you for your continued work in this, and Dre, you being a previous survivor. Thank you so much, and it looks like we got plenty of time until April of two thousand eighteen, so thank you for bringing this to our attention.
You'll be hearing from us again.
Yes, we wanted you to save the date, for sure.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from my council, my colleagues? Did you change your hairstyle, Ms. Miller?
I did.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah.
All right. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next card is from Eva Scovis? Hi, good evening, ma'am. Is it Evo or Eva? Eva.
Eva.
Eva, got it. Okay.
I would like to thank the Water Department and comment for passing out to check our leaks. I find thanks to them that I had a leak in my bathroom. And that is to thank for a job well done. I have another problem. Lately, in our neighborhood, I see the garbage can left in front of houses, and that's bothered me. I used to look out and see flowers. What's happened, they turned the basement into the rooms, and probably they don't have space. Is there any ordinance what they should do with that garbage, and when they move, can we give them that city ordinance so they will know better? And maybe I'm wrong, everybody does, but I think we should take care of our neighborhoods. Any answer?
Okay, good question. So you're talking about the garbage cans, what, they're being left out on the street, or?
In front of the house, where before were flowers, and it was looking nice. Now they have three big garbage cans, because they don't have space where to put them.
Oh, Ms. Martel, is there some sort of ordinance on that? Or I thought it'd have to be up against the house or on the side? You saying that...
On the side or inside the basement, that's what it was for us before. Now I see them in front of the house with lots of cars parked.
Okay. Are you familiar with Daly City iHelp?
No.
Do you go on the computer?
Yeah, not too much.
Not too much?
But I can...
Okay.
I had somebody else putting something in the computer. So if that's what you're asking me to do.
If you can provide me with some addresses, we certainly will follow up on it. If you can tell me where the addresses are, that where it is occurring, then we can follow it.
Okay, I don't want to be public. Probably I gave my name, we live in a crazy...
No, but we won't. When we follow up, your name will not be used.
I don't have nothing against the people, or maybe they don't know better.
Right.
I think the city should give an ordinance out, the garbage must be put in a place where they don't interfere with the beauty of the city.
Do you get our Daly City newsletter?
Yes, I do.
Maybe we can put something in there as a reminder, you know, garbage cans should be placed...
I even see fleece around, and that is worrying. If everybody start doing that, we're gonna have a health problem.
All right. All right, Eva, go ahead.
I'm retired, I'm watching some things. I walk at Gallup Park, they have done a water fill job improving it, and the new grass they put is water full. I love dogs, but I see dogs come in the artificial grass where they play, the kids. I see them run them up and down. Kids are rolling in that grass, and they have allergies. If we can have some science, there is plenty of space for the dogs to walk, not to use that area where the games take place, and little ones roll around, and they have some allergies. That's a thought.
All right. Thank you, Eva.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Pamela Di Giovanni. Good evening, Pam.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. First of all, given that the wildfires are happening in our state, and I believe that some of our firefighters are also up there trying to help out, I want to clarify something that I heard when I was at Safeway and other places, that I, again, thank you for the raises for the police and fire, because they give our community so much, but as of two thousand eight, for the record, they had not had a raise since that time is my understanding. And so I just want to make sure that the people at home, because there weren't enough details given, because, you know, the council meeting, but it was a big confusion out in the community, and because they got a raise, and that our city will not go bankrupt because our police and fire got a raise. So these are two things that I heard throughout the community when I've been out. Secondly, I just want to say this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so hence wearing the pink, and which is Oct- the pink, and which is October. So in honor of all those survivors sitting here and those at home who I know, and those who are, please get your mammograms early, and my council member's wife as well. So I want to make sure that we don't forget that this is still a battle, even though we've come a long ways, we still continue to fight for that and remind women to make sure they go get their mammograms as well, and thank them for all their work for the American Cancer Society, because that's also a big help. So thank you very much to the council for their support, and also for cancer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. All right, that's the cards that I have for this evening. I'd like to move on. Next is appointments. Do we have any appointments from anyone this evening?
I do.
Mr. Buena Ventura, please.
I have an appointment available for the Personnel Board Commission. So at this time, I would like to nominate Mark Santa Maria. Mr. Santa Maria is an attorney who has been doing a lot of community work here in Daly City. He has headed some immigration forums for our community. He always seems to be out there, and I think he's deserving of this, to serve on this type of commission. So at that, this time, I'd make the motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. On the motion to appoint Dr. Mark Santa Maria to the Personnel Board, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you so much. Congratulations to Dr. Mark Santa Maria. From what I've known of, know of him, I know he would be a great, he'd do great on, as a commissioner. Is there any other appointments this evening? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to reports. We'll start off with council committee, item number 10. Council committee meetings, September 25th through October 8th. There's one in your packet. And for the rest of the council members, council member Buena Ventura and I met with the city manager with folks from the Jefferson Elementary School District. They are embarking on a plan that is sorely needed to keep our qualified and good teachers here at our schools here in Daly City, especially with the elementary school district. And they conducted a survey, and 40% of them said that within the next five years, they may be leaving, because the cost of rent and home ownership affordability is getting to be expensive. So what the Jefferson Elementary School District has embarked on is creating workforce housing, to which they are going to build, I think it's 48 units, and it'll be open to the staff and faculty of the Jefferson Elementary School District. Right now, they are in the process, I think they've already conducted an environmental impact report, and now they're doing outreach to the community in the neighborhood of the St. Francis Heights area. It's going to be at M.P. Brown Elementary School. So you will be hearing more about that. But it's a, it's a unique system. Ms. Martel, I think San Mateo has something, and Daly City doesn't, or...
The College of San Mateo.
College.
The College of San Mateo, for several years, has provided housing for faculty and staff members to be able to live locally and teach and serve the College of San Mateo.
So with that being said, I think we're on to something good, and it may set a precedent for other school districts and other cities to follow. So that was the result of the meeting. Ms. Martel, did I cover everything mostly, or I leave out something?
Well, I believe so. I think it's important, Mayor, as well, to advise the public that the, we are working collaboratively with the school district to help facilitate the development of this housing on their school property, because we understand the value of having teachers live locally and staff be able to live locally and serve the school district. The city ultimately does not have the final decision-making authority with regards to the development of this housing. Clearly, we want to support their efforts for public outreach in the same way that we would conduct public outreach if it was a private development and the public would be invited in. And the school district fully intends to solicit public input on the concept and that kind of thing, and to address whatever concerns. But ultimately, the school district does have control over its own property and how they would want to use that. But I think it's a good first step that they have been working with. They reached out to us first to get our support for their project and to help facilitate having the project move forward, and which is what we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Is there any other further comments? All right, moving, is there any other council reports? All right, and how about next item, which is other council information. City council information. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on Wednesday, October 4th, as mentioned, Dr. Mark Santa Maria has been doing immigration workshops, and he did an update on immigration, around what's going on in immigration recently on October 4th, last Wednesday. And actually, that, you can access that workshop on our Daly City website, and our city manager made sure that that was online. So that happened recently, just to inform everyone around what's happening on immigration. Also, with the mayor attending the TJ Maxx opening and ceremony, I'm sure many have seen kind of a lot of the new businesses opening up. And so we are there bright and early at 7:30 a.m. And there are people out there, actually, we heard at 5:00 or 6:00, waiting to be the first in line. And so that was a nice morning. Also attended the Skyline College Environmental Science Groundbreaking. And so they, at Skyline College, are going to be building an environmental science building that actually overlooks the coast towards Pacifica. And so it will be utilized for environmental studies as well as an event space. So, you know, it's great, because a lot of our Daly City residents go to Skyline. So that was nice. And last but not least, I had a wonderful opportunity to be at the swearing-in ceremony for our new police officers, police attendants, and also the promotion of two other police in the force. So I, that was a great opportunity to really see such the hard work and dedication that they have, and that, I think there was 17 in total, Mayor?
Thirteen police officers, two sergeants, and I think three police assistants.
Yeah, and so that was just a beautiful ceremony here in City Hall. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. One, Mike, do you have something? No? Okay, I'd like to make a comment, actually, two comments. And it's all good news. Well, first, we had our flu shot done at one of our local fire houses this past weekend. And according to our city manager, this year, as a result of social media and getting the information out, it was highly successful. It was 10 times successful than last year. It increased tenfold. And I'd like to thank the County of San Mateo for providing all the flu shots. And hopefully that next year, it can only get bigger. We'll continue to ask the County of San Mateo. But getting the word out and spreading the word is very, very important. Vice Mayor made mention that we were at TJ Maxx a couple of days ago, and I guess we should have gotten our flu shots, because I've been sick in the bed since then. We're all sick. And please, folks, when you, if you're feeling good, go out and get your flu shots. The other news I wanted to make mention is Pamela Di Giovanni mentioned it earlier. You know, public safety is first and foremost, and in Daly City, we have done the best that we can with what little that we have. I'd like to thank the city manager and our police and fire for sending folks up north to the fires to assist. My son came home today, and he's with San Francisco Police, and he said, Dad, we sent 60 people up there. And when time is short, to reach out and to adhere to mutual aid to help one another, that's very, very important. I'd like to thank the city of Daly City for doing so, even with our limited resources. All right, that's all the comments that I have at this time. Is there any other comments? Okay, hearing none.
Mayor?
Oh, yes, Vice Mayor, yes.
I think I have one last comment, just to remind everyone about the event this Saturday for Filipino-American History Month. It's going to be in a new location, so it's not going to be at the Westlake. It's going to be at March Banks Park, somewhere different. So there's going to be lots of entertainment, great food. For those that are 21 and older, there's also a beer garden. But there is also, you know, artists, local artists, that haven't been performing since the 1990s. So there's a lot of local folks, good food, and so hope to see everyone there, March Banks Park, for the Filipino-American celebration.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, any reports from staff?
None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Okay, the last item is an adjournment. I would like to adjourn this meeting on behalf of the following. Stacy Etchubur. Ms. Etchubur is married to a San Francisco police officer, and the incident in Las Vegas when the shooting transpired, her husband told her, you go run, I'll stay here and take care of the wounded. And she did try to leave the area and was subsequently injured and succumbed to her injuries. You know, we don't have any control over our lives, especially in tragic situations like that. Can you imagine if her husband or the both of them ran? Maybe the husband would have gone as well. So I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of her. I would also like to adjourn in memory of Carolyn Livinggood. Thank you, Marion. She passed away on Tuesday, October 3rd. Carolyn was a longtime Peninsula journalist. She was a steadfast community advocate, committed supporter of military veterans, and many other causes. And she will be missed by many throughout San Mateo County. Marion, is there any more that you know about her that you would like to add?
She was a member of the community as well, and she was almost everywhere all the time.
Thank you for that. So those are the two names I have. Lastly, I would like to adjourn in memory of the many deaths of the tragic incidents in Las Vegas, and also those who have lost their lives in the current fires happening in North County, which as of today burned 57,000 acres, and I believe we've had 10 deaths so far. So with that being said, do we have any other additions to the list? Okay, if we can only, if we can all pause for a moment of silence, please? Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.